Okay, so first on the agenda tonight is our LVTI admissions policy and some slight changes. So I'm assuming Principal Gallo, you're gonna kinda lead us down that path. Alright.
I also brought Jessalyn Guzman.
Yes, and Jess Guzman. Thank you, Jessica. Thank you.
She's gonna ask, if you have tough questions, ask.
Well, yeah, we'll save the tough ones for her.
So I don't have, I did send the changes and the rationale behind the changes and wondering if there are any questions. I can go a little more in-depth into it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I guess just for public consumption, do you wanna just talk a little bit about the changes that we're making?
At the beginning, some of the changes are just names. You know, we do have to make sure our policy is updated. And we are required by regulation to have the policy voted on with or without changes every year by the school committee.
Right.
And then the superintendent would provide an attestation for that.
Okay.
What we have done in the past couple years, we've really looked at the policy and looked at areas that we felt it fell short in its purpose and recommended changes here. This year, we have a couple more significant changes where it deals with our three cycles of applications. One thing that we noticed is, as you'll see here, is our May, end of May application, we have pretty much not had any new students apply. So what we're doing is we're really delaying the admission of our students for two months without, for no reason.
Right.
And then we're just re, you know, doing another round of admissions and with the same group that we could've done in March. So our first proposal is to eliminate that cycle. The second one would be in August. The reason we're doing August is there are new students that come into the city of Lynn. And what we've noticed is, you know, we want to give those students an opportunity to apply to the school. In this cycle, we only had nine applicants over the summer and, you know, we've looked at our data for that. But because it's done as a lottery, none of them got in through the lottery process. So what we wanna do is, we want to actually move it back to a scoring, using the scoring that we use, which is in the policy. If we had done that, three of the nine would've gotten in immediately.
Okay.
And then currently, everybody goes back onto a rank-based system after the August admission. At which time, you know, one of the thoughts is some of these students now, like they would've gotten in originally or getting in, would get in from our waiting list. So now we have brand-new students into the system, going to a brand-new school and then being offered the opportunity to transfer to a second time to a school. You know, so just additional transitions for students. So in doing that, we kinda looked at our information and what we wanna do is we wanna bring 80% of our students in March, February, March is the date, in that first lottery. Bring 80% of them in. And then at that point, bring 15% as under the lottery. Again, giving every student an opportunity to get into, the opportunity to be admitted to Lynn Tech. Now, that only leaves 5% for August, plus any changes that have happened. Some students get admitted and decided not to come to Lynn Tech. They decide to go back to their school. So we wait till August. And in the past, that number has been somewhere around 10% of ours. So 5% that we haven't applied yet, plus another 5% of students that left. We think with the June, it might be slightly higher than that.
Okay.
So that's the, you know, we're gonna keep the waitlist process as is. That seems to be working. So any questions?
Okay. Any questions from committee? Yeah, Member Reed.
So, for those people who are in the second August cycle, those are completely new applicants always? Or are they people who, can they also be re-applicants?
Sure. Thanks for the question. So in August, everybody who did not get in in the first cycle
Right.
is then, we then go to August. And they, them, plus any student who is not a current member of Lynn Public Schools. If you are a member of Lynn Public Schools at the time of application, then you cannot apply late. And that's been a very effective part of the policy to make sure that, you know, we do have that deadline. It's worked. We've had, this year was actually one of our lower years at 600 applicants. A lot of times, we're up in the 625, 650, even as high as 700 one year.
So that August is just for new, for people who, because they can't be later applicants, so it's just?
So it's new applicants plus anybody that was not accepted in the original one?
Gotcha, gotcha.
And that was our thought of eliminating the June one. For June, we had, this year, we had zero, zero new applicants. So you had this group of students who just had to wait till June. One of the problems that comes is with scheduling in the schools, the high schools, and, you know, now you have, you know, you have all these schools that have scheduled students and we're making those changes, when this really hasn't been, hasn't provided a benefit or a detriment. It just seems like it's neutral, other than delaying student acceptance.
When you say the June, sorry, my question's.
No, that's fine.
So when you say the June date had zero new students, deadline had zero new students, are you referring to new students as in people who weren't in the last cycle, or you mean?
New students that were not in the last cycle.
So why wouldn't the other people reapply? Because they'd have to wait till August anyways?
No, so the, so.
The same people, I'm sorry.
So the same, so what I'm doing is, I'm actually, those that we normally would do in June, in May-June, sorry, I think it's actually May.
Yeah, yeah.
Those that we normally, we would wait till May, we're actually just gonna do them in our regular cycle.
Got it, okay.
Rather than having, you know, again, like the stress of the students, you know, some of our eighth graders, you know, so they're here already thinking they're going to another school and then, as they're getting ready to leave, we make that change.
Yeah.
So that's really the big, you know, difference. The purpose of that was, we were hoping to, like, as students would come into the system, that they would then have that opportunity to.
Gotcha.
Okay. Any other questions from the, okay. So we would need a motion to put that to the full committee?
I'm, oh, yeah, Dr. Alvarez, of course.
If I could ask Principal Gallo that we create an email on page one and the hard, so that it's applications at, you know, LVTI at Lynn Schools, just for transparency, so that whether, you know, the Deputy Boris also has a password and my, so we just need like a consistency, in case there's a staff change, as well as a hard copy mail and hand delivery be changed to the position. So, and then 100 Bennett Street, Lynn, Mass., which will eventually change probably also sometime in the spring. But we'll deal with that when it comes. But it should be position, and then we can create an email. We've done that for several other either applications or situations in which we just have like, you know, a lynnschools.org email that addresses what it's for.
We try to stay away from names of staff, as much as we love you. Just so that there's consistency and God forbid, there's any change, like you move on to a different school or district that it's a neutral, yeah, it's a neutral.
Yeah.
So it would be the position, whatever the position is, that the hard copy would go to.
Like in LVTI admissions.
And then, I'm sure IT can help create a, yeah, LVTIadmissions@LynnSchools.org would. And then they can have it go to whoever you want it to go to.
Because most of, and can you clarify how the students actually do apply through the website and just to make sure that's clear?
So we have a Microsoft form that we create every year, so that we can then collect that data when students are applying. And students have to apply from their own LPS laptop that they have. So that way, we can receive right off the bat, like what account it is, what student it is. And then also because they attach their artifact, which is one of the components for the application as well. And the only way they can do that is if it's from their laptop. So we have created those little filters, so that it can be like that. And then that's how we collect all the information from the applications. Now, if it's a student that is out of district, that is not currently a Lynn Public School student, and they're interested in applying, I have provided my email address for them to send me the artifact, so that then I can make a folder for them in our teams and then make sure that I have all their transcripts, all the information that we need outside of the district.
And that's what that LVTI admissions would replace from what it sounds like?
So we can replace that, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Make a motion to move this policy to the full committee with the amended email, LVTIAdmissions@LynnSchools.org, and the amended position title and the address. Okay, second. Roll call, please.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite, absent?
Okay. All right, thank you. That was great, thank you. Thanks for your hard work on that, thank you. The families will appreciate it. All right, next up, we have a bunch of policies that, a lot of it will just kinda have to wording and things like that. So I guess we'll first by introducing Attorney Gallo, who's gonna kinda help us go through this process. So Attorney Gallo, welcome back. Hope you had a great summer.
Thank you, good evening, everyone.
It's nice to see you.
Good evening.
So we're gonna start with Policy JRA, and that is Student Records. So Attorney Gallo, when you're ready, if you could talk a little bit about the changes you were hoping on that.
Sure. Thank you, everyone, and good evening to Policy Subcommittee Chairperson Dugan, Vice Chair Gately, and Subcommittee Member Reed, Superintendent Members of the Administration. For the record, Charlie Gallo, Lynn Public Schools Compliance Officer, no relation to Fred, but evidently traveling in pairs this particular evening.
Gallo Brothers.
Indeed, indeed. So the first policy before you, as Chairperson Dugan referenced, is JRA, which is Student Records. So you all know and were part of this multi-year overhaul that occurred with Mass Association of School Committees. You went from roughly 400 policies to roughly 275 policies. It appears this one fell through the cracks. It was one that was worked on during the COVID period, and we discovered that recently. So you have, hopefully, this packet with sort of highlights and things?
We do, yes.
Okay, perfect. So the first couple of paragraphs start out fine. We then, in the third paragraph, go on to reference the applicable laws. That's FERPA at the federal level and the Student Records Regulations at the Massachusetts level. Then, beyond that, we enumerate sort of A through F. We restate those laws and regulations for some reason. And we also, and it was good that Dr. Alvarez and Deputy Rogiro just mentioned this, we mention a position by name. Okay, so that exact thing is happening here as well. If you turn to the page numbered three, this is simply the masked version of the policy that should've been put before the school committee a few years back with Dorothy Presser. It is essentially the first and second paragraph of our existing policy and the rest chopped. This is just a fall-through-the-cracks issue, but I'm happy to address any questions, if there are any, on this one.
Okay. Any questions from the committee about JRA? All right, so, oh, yes, Member Gately.
Charlie, it says here, I mean, Mr. Gallo, it says here that Richard Arabino, Lynn Public School, is the keeper. Isn't there anywhere tells us in this policy who keeps it?
So now, the keeper of student records are the supervisors of attendance, of which you now have two in that role, Ms. Freyer and Ms. Byrd. The mask model policy doesn't even give reference to that position. The former Lynn policy includes both the position and the name of the person who is in it. Mask recommends you just delete that whole paragraph and adopt what's on page three there.
Okay, so it would be the attendance?
Correct, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're very welcome, of course.
Mr. Gallo, I believe the custodian of all records is still the superintendent, regardless of who the designated person collecting it is.
Correct.
There's no need to place it, is that what?
That's exactly right. And so there's reference in that second paragraph, and thank you, Dr. Alvarez. The superintendent or designee will provide for the proper administration. And so you're delegating that authority essentially to supervise, yeah, right. Thank you both.
All right. So you know for other questions, just a motion to put that to the full committee?
Yeah, make a motion to move the updated JRA policy to the full committee.
Second, roll call, please.
Mr. Dugan?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mrs. Sadowite, absent?
Okay. All right. The next policy up is BBBE, Unexpired Term Fulfillment. So Attorney Gallo, again, if you kinda wanna walk us through what you're thinking there.
Sure. That's another one that we discovered that was just a little error that occurred in that multi-year overhaul, where we reference incorrectly what the city charter actually says. And so I have a proposed BBBE for you there, that rather than attempt to restate what the city charter says and run into these issues, if it were to ever be amended, we simply reference the city charter. The city charter does control on this topic anyway. There is absolutely no need for the policy to be restated in the manual in that way.
Correct. Okay. Any questions from the committee? Yes, Member Reed.
Attorney Gallo, if the city, I know this obviously talks to city charter changing, which generally not about this necessarily, but would this, this would always just follow that city charter?
Exactly right. And so, Member Reed, thank you for asking that, because by using the proposed language, if it were to change, then, exactly, we don't need to call another subcommittee meeting here to mirror that policy. As much as I like to come and spend time with you all, and I'm sure likewise, we, you know.
We love having you. Okay, we need a motion to put that to the full committee.
Make a motion to move the updated BBBE policy to the full committee.
Second, roll call.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite, absent?
Okay. Next up is Policy ACA, which is the nondiscrimination on the basis of sex. So again, Attorney Gallo, if you wanna kinda talk us through the changes you're proposing.
Thank you, Chairperson Dugan. And if I may, the next several policies all relate, big picture, to some August 1st changes in the federal Title IX law and regulation. And so I'd just like to give you an overview of what happened. Title IX has become somewhat of a political hot-button issue, and so that presidential administrations at the federal level are changing it. Under the prior president, the standard for a hostile environment harassment was severe, pervasive, and objectively offensive. To violate Title IX, the conduct had to be severe, pervasive, and objectively offensive. Under the new administration, or not new, but the current administration's changes, they've broadened that definition. And it's so broad that I actually need to read it still. I still need to be able to get to memorization point on this. But it is unwelcome sex-based conduct that, based on the totality of the circumstances, is subjectively and objectively offensive, and is so severe or pervasive, that's a big change, instead of and, it's an or, that it limits or denies a person's ability to participate in or benefit from the recipient's education program or activity, that is, as a staff member or as a student. And so we must amend our Title IX and other policies I'm gonna go through to change that standard. In addition, Title IX broadens the protected classes in terms of sexual harassment or discrimination. We're adding now, at the federal level, gender identity, which is not new to Massachusetts. Massachusetts has had that since 2013, but the feds are finally catching up in that regard. They are, however, also adding some others that we haven't had. Sex stereotypes, sex characteristics, and the biggie is pregnancy and related conditions to pregnancy. So we must amend on the basis of those changes. Finally, and this committee will appreciate this, the Biden Title IX changes parse out policy from procedure. They separate the two. And so what you see is a lot shorter policies and less procedural steps within them. And so that's a big picture of what's going on. I joked about this earlier. I almost guarantee you'll be revisiting this at some point. Because there is an election and inauguration coming up. I don't know if the new administration coming in will keep these changes or change them again. In addition to that, there are 26 states that have so far sued the federal government about these changes. The states are generally prevailing. And so this is likely to end up in the Supreme Court at some point. So for all of those reasons, this is probably, you know, gonna be somewhat temporary. So that's my big picture. Are there any questions on that before I get into the nitty-gritty of the actual policies?
Any questions from the committee? No? Yeah, thank you for that.
Thank you for allowing me to do that.
Interesting.
All right. You have on page five, the current ACA, which is nondiscrimination on the basis of sex. And you have the proposed ACA, nondiscrimination on the basis of sex. We must add things like sex stereotypes, sex characteristics, pregnancy or pregnancy-related conditions to the protected classes within that policy. The proposed ACA is shorter. It was written in concert with our Title IX attorney, Katie Minault. And she would recommend, and I'm here, you know, as the sort of partner on that, to recommend to the committee your consideration of proposed ACA to comply with the new Title IX changes.
Okay. Any questions from the committee? So, yeah, we need a motion for ACA, and I think AC, did we do that one, do those two together?
We did, did we do AC?
I can do that now if you'd like.
Yeah, why don't we, because, yeah, yeah, why don't we do all those now?
So page six, AC, the first thing you'll notice is I have a couple typographical errors, formatting errors, that are highlighted. And I just ask you to put a pin in that. I'm gonna touch on that later on. But the existing AC has an opening paragraph there. It has subparaphracts numerated 1 through 6, none of which are problematic. And then it closes with who is within the protected classes that we are not to discriminate against according to state or federal law. On page seven, again, written in concert with Attorney Minault, is a proposed new ACA. We think we should start, as we do in other policies, with our protected classes. And so you see, I've removed that from the bottom, put it on the top, and also added in the various new protected classes under Title IX. And also race, this is new in Massachusetts, under the Crown Act. Hair, you know, hairstyles are protected in that way. And so there's an asterisk there. I've also fixed a couple typos, and I'm gonna, you know, again, mention that a little bit later on. But the main points, 1 through 6, there's no reason to change. And so that is the proposed AC. And I'll pause if there are any questions, and if not, I'll just continue to plug away.
Okay. Any questions in the committee?
I'm good.
Okay. All right. So I mentioned earlier, you have about 275 policies. We did a search, and there are, on page eight, a grouping of them that reference our protected classes and need to be amended in order to encompass all of the protected classes that now exist per the Crown Act and per the new Title IX changes. And so I've written up a proposed motion for you on page eight, which is to update existing protected class language to the following in all existing policies, including without limitation, those listed below. And if there are any questions, I'm happy to read those. But I tried to make it efficient for you and just write out a policy, a proposed motion here to take care of that.
Okay. Questions from the committee? All right, so why don't we pause there for a moment and get a motion on ACA, AC, and then we can do the, this next one separate? Okay.
Make a motion to move the updated ACA and AC policies to the full committee.
Second, roll call.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite, absent?
Okay, and then we would need this proposed motion, yep.
Make a motion to update the existing protected class language to the following in all existing policies, including without limitation, those listed below, and recommend it to the full committee.
Second, roll call, please.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite, absent?
All right. All right, thank you, Attorney Gallo. And moving on, we have ACAB.
Okay, so not all sexual harassment rises to the level of Title IX. We mentioned that Title IX, there's a severity, there's a pervasiveness, there are these requirements that go above and beyond what might be lesser sexual harassment. Massachusetts has a couple of statutes for lesser sexual harassment, one which protects students and one which protects staff. They are in reverse order, Chapter 151B and Chapter 151C. The current ACAB sort of was written under the old Title IX rules, but also doesn't do a great job of distinguishing Title IX versus staff-based versus student-based sexual harassment. The proposed ACAB is really a version of the best one that we found, working with Title IX counsel Minault. It's based largely on Lexington's, and you'll see, does a really nice job of separating out on page 11, what's Title IX. On page 12, what is staff-based sexual harassment, and on page 13, students. I want to note, on page 12, I've highlighted, and this will be another one to put a pin in, Title IX grievance procedures will be made available on our website. And I'll explain a little bit later on why I'm putting a pin in that. On page 13, again, sort of parsing out policy from procedure. In the school, the principal is gonna do the initial sort of investigation for non-Title IX-based harassment discrimination. At the, you know, department level, it would be that department administrator on page 14. And there are some rough guidelines, but we're not getting too into the trenches within policy in terms of procedure. And so I'm happy to answer any questions, but that's sort of an overview of the proposed, I believe it was, is it ACAB?
ACAB.
Thank you. They get.
That answers a lot.
They are, yes.
All right. Any questions on the proposed ACAB language?
No, no questions from me. All right. Make a motion to move the updated ACAB policy to the full committee.
Second, roll call, please.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite, absent?
Okay.
Okay.
All right, and then we have JBA harassment. So again, Attorney Gallo, if you could kinda.
Thank you.
Just through your proposal.
Sure. JBA is right now the procedure for investigating harassment. It's really not a policy, it's a procedure. That is because the prior presidential administration, the Trump Title IX rules, really required that procedures be codified in that permanent way, with various waiting periods and procedural steps that now no longer exist. And so that necessitated the sort of putting into a policy that level of procedure. There's otherwise no reason for JBA. And when we're back on page 12, I asked you to please put a pin in the district's Title IX grievance procedures shall be made available at LynnSchools.org. And that is because the proposal would be to revoke JBA in its entirety. Those procedures have been drawn up with Title IX counsel. They will be put on the website, but not within the policy. And it's not just, you know, Attorney Minault or myself who are recommending this. Mass Association of School Committees is also recommending this. In their model policy manual now, there is no more JBA. And so the recommendation here tonight would be to revoke and not replace.
Eliminate JBA, okay. Any questions on that from the committee?
Make a motion to remove policy JBA.
Make a motion to remove policy JBA.
Okay, second, roll call, please.
Oh, sorry, yeah, make a motion to bring, to remove JBA, bring it to the full committee.
Right, second, roll call, please.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite? Absent.
Okay. All right, and then finally, we have a proposed vote for consideration, just some language that gives the superintendent a little more, or his or her designee, to revise some policies, so Attorney Gallo, if you would kind of want to talk us a little bit through that?
And so this is just a proposed vote for, for the committee and for the administration to consider, and I'll read it. "The school committee authorizes the superintendent or designee to revise policies adopted by the school committee for the following limited purposes only, provided that any such revision shall be communicated to the school committee through its secretary, and no such revisions will take effect if objected to by any school committee member or its chairperson, and those limitations are typographical, grammatical, punctuation, and formatting issues, gender-inclusive language, and family-friendly language." Now, I asked you to put a pin in the page, I think it was page 13, was it 3?
3.
Oh, page 3, yes, yes, back to page 3, right.
Let's see, was my hyphenated?
Page 6.
Page 6.
6.
Thank you, Ms. Jewels.
There's a lot of pages, sorry. There it is, yep.
Page 6, so you'll see that there are a couple typographical and formatting issues when you're doing this multi-year overhaul, you know, so many different policy changes, these are bound to come up, and there are a couple that exist. I can also tell you that there are a couple of instances where we found where we're not using gender-inclusive language. One example is JFABE, which is the Military Families Policy, which uses his/her instead of just simply they, or his/her they, that type of language. That particular policy, as well as ADF, both refer to parent, ADF is the Wellness Policy, both refer to parents, rather than parents and guardians, and also, interestingly, the school committee compensation policy, which is BID, refers to his/her, and of course, we know that the voters of Lynn could vote his/her they, whomever they wish to do so.
Correct.
And so this would be limited authority to fix those changes, making sure that those changes were first communicated to you, and that there was no objection, and this was written with the utmost respect of the authority that you have. I served, as you know, on school committee and enjoyed, if you can believe it, policy subcommittee, and so I-
Do as well.
-have this with utmost respect for your authority, and wrote it that way, and also want to mention that Howard Greenspan has reviewed this and is okay with the language as presented for your consideration, and for the administration team's consideration as well.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or concerns? All right, so we need a motion to-
Yeah.
-move that forward.
I make a motion to authorize the superintendent, designee to, I make, I make a motion to move this proposal to the full committee.
Second, roll call, please.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite? Absent.
Okay. And Attorney Gallo, thank you so much. I believe that is it for tonight, so thank you for all your hard work, we couldn't do this work without you, honestly, so thank you, thank you, thank you. Without any-
Making business on the table?
Making most children? Second, roll call, please.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite? Absent.
Okay, meeting adjourned.
Good evening, everyone, thank you.